Good evening. Let me go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District to order, meeting to order. It is Thursday, February 11th, 2021. It is now 6:30, and we're at the Faze Center located at One South Port Ringgold in Rio Grande City, Texas. A good call, roll call for purposes of determining a quorum. Mr. Jay Penya.
Present.
Mr. Basilio D. Barrial Jr.
Present.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
Present.
Mr. John Apapev, Pope the Fourth.
Present.
Mr. Elizado Velazquez Jr., absent. And Dr. B. Bebenow, absent. Myself, Eddie Ramirez, present. The two members reflect that we do have a quorum. Before we proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, it seems like every meeting we're having to take a moment of silence, but I can think of three people that I know that have, that we've lost in long-term employees, one being Coach Ricardo Contreras, I know was in the district for 30 years, Diana Alanis Ramirez, the district for 42, and Jose Amaro Gutierrez, who was a security guard for 10 years. And I know Mr. Barrial, he knows somebody, he's very personal, so if you can say a few words.
Let me begin. I think our family took a devastating hit. Some of these people that were within our district, and I'll just go, Richard Contreras, I call them Mr. Basketball. He was one of our coaches of basketball in high school, but forget about that. He basically was basketball day and night with youth. He was a tremendous family man, tremendous individual for our, for our school district. And I'd be honest with you, he always worked with a lot of kids. He has a great following of a lot of children because he coached a lot of kids, not only in the high school level, but in the junior high level. A great example, a great role model. In fact, a good friend of mine. And it's tough, but I can only say we still have him in our memories, good things about him. But he is, I call what the heart and soul of basketball is in Rio Grande City, that would be Richard Contreras. Diana, I've known Diana since I was a young kid, a young kid, I was 27-years-old. I could only say she basically worked on insurance and helped a lot of people. She was very instrumental in, in helping a lot of our staff. But if you knew Diana, you know she'd take, I mean, she'd do anything, anything to help people out. We go way, way back, very, very nice lady, and very, very helpful. Had some kids that contributed a lot to our district, and again, very, very service-oriented. And the last one I would say is Joe, I call him Joe. I've known Joe all my life also, and Joe started with the Community Action Council, and he was in charge of helping a lot of poor people. He then migrated to the school district where he continued his, his, his employment with us after he retired from the Community Action Council. And I can only say, if you knew Joe, he was a, a big, tall man with a great heart. The, the district took a great loss, and hopefully, hopefully this pandemic has come to an end, because too many of these stories keep happening every, every month, every week. And basically, we lost three great individuals.
With that being said, please join us in honoring them with a moment of silence. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Penya, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jay Penya.
Thank you.
The two members reflect that Mr. Elizado Velazquez is now present, 6:34. Section three, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion for approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of January 14th, 2021, as well as a special board meeting of January 28th, 2021?
I saw moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Barrial, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, do we have anything on the public forum? All right, nothing on public forum. Proceed to section five, recognitions. I believe there are two separate ones. One is Gruia High School student, is Iliana Navarro.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, and Mr. Penya, Acting Superintendent of Schools. My name is Iliana Navarro, counselor at Gruia High School. On behalf of Mr. Osuna, Acting Principal of Gruia High School, and the entire Gruia High School staff, I would like to recognize student Tiffany A. Solis. Tiffany is a senior at Gruia High School. She earned her Associate of Arts degree in interdisciplinary studies with a cumulati distinction from South Texas College in May, 2020, as a junior. Tiffany is the daughter of Francisco and Cindy Solis. Cindy has been, Tiffany has been active in many organizations. She currently serves as the Secretary for Gruia High School National Honor Society Chapter, Student Council President, Senior Class Treasurer, and is an active FFA member. She is also the president for Los Ranchitos 4H, an RGCCISD peer tutor, and a member of the STC Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. She was also selected to represent Gruia High School in the RGV Sector Board of Patrol Head of the Class. Tiffany would like to take this opportunity to thank the following individuals. Mrs. Lisa Gonzalez, Student Council Sponsor, Mrs. Iliana Navarro, myself, her counselor, Mrs. Liseth Reyes, Spanish AP Teacher, Mr. Danny Lopez, and Mrs. Glenda Solis, Dual Enrollment Teachers. These individuals have always encouraged her to do her best and have continuously supported her and guided her. Tiffany would also like to thank RGCCISD for partnering with STC and making dual enrollment possible for her and others to pursue higher education while attending high school. Congratulations Tiffany, you have done a sensational job. Gruia High School and the entire RGCCISD wishes you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mrs. Navarro. Then the other recognition is Veterans of Foreign Wars District Number 18 for the 2020, 2021 Teachers of the Year. Mr. Marco Olivares.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Penya, Acting Superintendent. My name is Marco Olivares. I'm here this evening as a veteran of foreign wars, Post 8526, Commander of the Rio Grande City. We would like to recognize the following teachers who were selected, not only as the VFW Post 8526, 2020, 2021 Smart Mayor Citizenship Outstanding Teachers of the Year, but as the District 18 Teachers of the Year, which is from Brownsville all the way to Laredo. RGCCISD swept all three age categories. In Kinder through fifth grade category, we have Mr. Juan Silva from John and Olive Inosa Elementary, and he is present with us this evening. Mr. Silva?
In the sixth through eighth grade category, we have Mr. George Lozano from Ringgold Middle School. He will be presented with his plaque tomorrow. And in ninth through 12th grade category, we have Ms. Adelia Guerrero from Rio Grande City High School. She will be presented with her plaque tomorrow as well. Thank you educators for your continued dedication to our students in all aspects, but not limited to flag etiquette, art for veterans, and classroom discussions on the William G. Harold U.S. Marine Medal of Honor recipient, who was born here in Rio Grande City, and many other veterans. Thank you board for your time this evening in allowing my organization and myself in recognizing these educators. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Olivares. And congratulations to all those recognized tonight again.
Would you like to take a picture, Mr. President, or we'll wait for some?
Want to take one now? Pause?
Yes.
You only have one, the one that's present, right?
Yes. Mr. Silva and Mr. Olivares, please.
Take a picture.
The board, right here in front.
Yeah, where's the camera?
Please. Yes, sir. Under recognition, before Lady Rattlers and Gator Rattlers play tomorrow night, we want to congratulate our Lady Rattlers. They made history since 1985. You know, our team hasn't made district champs, and they did this year. So tomorrow, they will be playing against Flower Bluff in Falfurias at 6:00. It should be streamed, so look at our RGC webpage or Facebook, and, and it should be streamed there. Also, our Lady Gators made it to the playoffs, and they'll be playing also there in Falfurias, and they'll be playing against Robstown. So we'd like to congratulate both teams. They've done an outstanding job this season, and we wish them the best.
They sure have.
Also, sir, our boys have one more game, but they're tied for second right now, so they are in the playoffs. They'll be playing next Friday, so, you know, we'll be announcing that on our webpage as well.
Very good.
Awesome season for RGCCISD and basketball.
Amen. All right. Section six, reports and information. Item one, report on National Counseling Week. Mr. Rick Solis.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Adolfo Penya, Acting Superintendent of Schools. My name is Ricardo Solis. I'm the Executive Director for Guidance and Counseling. I'm joined by Ms. Nora Scobelo, Director of Counseling, and Ms. Lilia Olivares, Administrator for Counseling. At this moment, we would like to honor and thank each and every counselor what they do each and every single day. Our counselors have been at the forefront during this pandemic, not only academically, but personally and socially as we know. And for that, we want to thank them. And, you know, it's a special and very unique way in which our counseling department gets to be unified, and that's what we're here for today, a counseling department that is completely unified, not only in school, in the school district, but in community as well.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all the counselors. They have come, like Mr. Solis did say, to the forefront amid this pandemic, and they have been able to meet the needs of our students and our staff in this time. So I would like to take this time to thank them. Last week was their week. Last week, we were able to celebrate them and what they do for our students and our community. Thank you.
Good evening. We also would like to thank our principals for celebrating our counselors. They did a wonderful job in, in making them feel special. And our directors of the school district, we want to thank them as well. You know, they surprised our counselors with gifts, so, you know, it's very nice when you get a little, you know, a little surprise. So we want to thank everybody that celebrated our counselors this last week, and we have a little video for them, and for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you so much for honoring our counselors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we need to add, I don't know, a little bit more to that. I think during, even though we realize how important all these roles are, it feels like during COVID times, it's just, it's all the more paramount, and much more emphasizing, you know, as to what everybody does here. And when it comes to counselors, I mean, right now, children some at home, they, some of them are lost and don't know what to do, and, you know, you all are playing a significant role, and you need to be applauded for, not only worrying about your own families, but I know you take this home with you, and you worry about all the kids out there. This, this COVID can't end soon enough, but thank you for all you do. If anybody else wants to add more to that, I just tip my hat off to all the counselors out there. Thank you for everything you all do for the school district. Anybody want to add anything to that? Okay. Item number two, report on delinquent tax collections for the period of July 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, presented by Jaime E. Gonzalez. I mean, you're on Zoom?
I'm Zoom. Can you, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, President, Ramirez, Board, Acting Superintendent Penya. My name is, for the record, Jaime Gonzalez. I'm an attorney with Linebarger. Before I begin my report, I would like to thank the board and the district for choosing Linebarger as your delinquent tax attorneys. I'm going to be presenting the report, our collection report for July 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. At Linebarger, we operate on two basic premises, the first being to work with your taxpayers. And we understand that especially during these difficult times, and you're doing these pandemic times, when people are out of work or in the hospital, and everybody knows that the valley, especially Starr County, has been hit very hard. So how do we work with our, with, with your taxpayers? The number one thing is to try to communicate with them. During this time period, we issued two demand letters, sent out over 22,000 statements. We conducted over 33 onsite visits. That's where actually a member of our office goes to the taxpayer's residence and tries to make contact with somebody to bring them in and do some kind of payment plan, and, and just to begin the payment process, hopefully. Initiate over 1,000 phone calls during this time period, and that effort resulted in over 91 taxpayers coming into your office to try to initiate a payment plan. If that is unsuccessful, we move on to the second phase of our, of our process, is which, which is to begin litigation. And even after we begin litigation, we are still, of course, able to work with the taxpayer to initiate payment plans in order to resolve their lawsuit. During this time period, we filed over 45 lawsuits, disposed over 26 lawsuits because payments were completed. We took over 20 judgments, and currently, we have over 524 cases in litigation for your school district. When that fails, and there is no contact with the taxpayer, and we still initiate payment plans even after judgment is taken, we move towards sale, and sale the, sell the property in order to recover taxes for your district. During our last sale, we conducted five property sales. Four other properties that were up for sale were struck and off or removed because payments were initiated, and we sold property, we sold eight properties originally at resale, or through resale. I can tell you that since I've been working with Linebarger, which has been about two years, and since our Attorney in Charge of the Sales Department, Mr. Michael Cano, during at least the last past five or six years, we have not sold a homestead property. So these properties that are being sold are not families that are being removed, or taxpayers that are being kicked out of their residence. They are predominantly vacant, abandoned properties, commercial properties, that taxes have not been paid. So what has been the result of all of that? From July 2020 through December 2020, we collected in base tax and in penalty and interest, over $1,379,562 for the district. Just in comparison, during that same time period, from July 2019 through December 2019, we collected a little over $1 million. So I want to emphasize that during a pandemic year with people having extreme difficulties, our goal is always to collect 100% or over what we did the previous year, and we, we far exceeded that. We collected over $300,000 during this time period, more than we did during the previous time period in 2019. And I, I just want to emphasize, I think that's a huge testament to the taxpayers of Rio Grande City ISD. It shows, I believe, extraordinary confidence in, in your ability and your work as, as a board. I, I think if they weren't trusting the job all of you were doing during these difficult times, frankly, they wouldn't be paying taxes. That's what's happened in the past. But we far exceeded what we did last year, and I can tell you the numbers from December, or from January till today's date are also basically ranking above what they did the previous year. So again, I want to thank the taxpayers, and I want to thank the board. I think it's a huge testament to all of you. Something that's not on my report, but I just want to give a plug, we are going to have a tax sale, Linebarger's going to have a tax sale on March 2nd. It's going to be one of our bigger ones that we've had the last few years. It's going to be on March 2nd, 10:30 a.m., on the south side of the courthouse, the Starr County Courthouse. We have 28 total properties for sale. 18 of them are for the Rio Grande City ISD School District. If anybody wants to look at what properties are available, we do three publications before this sale, and the Starr County Town Crier. We also, you also can visit our website at www.lgbs.com. And on March 22nd, we'll have hard copies available at our Edinburgh Office, at the Starr County Tax Office, at the Rio Grande City ISD Tax Office, and at the Roma ISD Tax Office. There is a new, just to, just to kind of put a disclaimer, there is a new rule from the Starr County Tax Office, that if you are wanting to bid on these properties, you have to be verified or clear of not owing taxes anywhere in Starr County. And that has to be done three weeks prior to bidding. That deadline is actually tomorrow, February 12th. So if you're wanting to bid, make sure you have that clearance by tomorrow, 5 o'clock, so that you can bid on March 2nd. That's all I have, board. Is there any questions?
I have a comment, actually. Counselor Gonzalez, I want to thank you for being available to me, and also your office, Joel Correa, who's just been wonderful at asking, answering a lot of the questions that we've had. And it's been a pleasure to get to know you, and more than anything, thank you for addressing my concerns about the COVID situation and the folks who weren't able to cover their taxes. And I do understand, as you had mentioned, that a lot of the properties that are being sold at this point in time are those that are abandoned, which at the same time is helping our community because it's getting some of these properties moving, and folks who actually want to invest and, and develop and whatnot. But thank you so much for, for that, and also thank you for the leniency in working with folks who are having trouble on, on other properties and whatnot. So just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. And to add on that, you're right, Joel Correa is our area manager in Starr County, and he's excellent. A lot of these, I can tell you that this work is reflective with the work he's done. We do offer COVID-sensitive payment plans, so if there is anybody listening, or anybody that the board knows, or anybody, anybody knows or having difficulty, then contact my office, contact Mr. Correa. He had, he, you know, Laura, with the, with the, with your, the tax office, the tax assessor with Rio Grande City ISD, she allows, very kindly allows Mr. Correa to have an office, a space within her office, and he's there pretty much all week to take calls and questions and initiating special COVID plans if necessary. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The only thing I would like to say is something you said a little while earlier, that all the people that properties are being sold are properties that are commercial or abandoned. Hopefully, as we move forward, this stuff about homestead continue about not putting people out on these times. So even though somebody may be late or what, this is not the time to put anybody out. So hopefully, that, that, that philosophy continues. So that's the only thing I would like, for me, for my, that nobody be put out at this time, because it's a difficult time. Now, I understand lots that are abandoned or properties, but homesteads where you have kids and families and, you know, things of that nature, is not where we want to be right now.
I, I completely agree with you. In fact, as I said, that our office in the last five years, even pre-COVID, that's not our philosophy. We work with a lot of taxpayers, we don't want to put anybody out. I can tell you that also as of January 2021, we have begun training a mineral warrant specialist. We'll have an individual who'll be looking at mineral accounts, people that are receiving royalty checks, and, and these people predominantly reside outside Starr County, but are, are taking resources from Starr County and from the school district. So we're going to make a concerted effort to put warrants, target them, so that this money is coming to the, to the district also.
I just didn't want to, I'm glad you mentioned Michael Cano and the RGCCISD Tax Office. I was going to mention them, so they weren't left out, because I know they helped out a lot. And then you also went to tax sale, the next tax sale, the date?
The next tax sale is on March 2nd. It's the first Tuesday in March at 10:30 a.m. at the south side doors of the courthouse.
I wanted you to reiterate, reiterate that date, because it's, it's my birthday, it's pretty special.
Good.
No, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. And to add on that, you're right. Joel Correa is our area manager in Starr County, and he's excellent. A lot of these, I can tell you that this work is reflective of the work he's done. We do offer COVID-sensitive payment plans. So if there is anybody listening or anybody that the Board knows or anybody knows or having difficulty, then contact my office, contact Mr. Correa. He, you know, Laura, with the tax office, the tax assessor with Real Grand City ISD, she allows, very kindly allows Mr. Correa to have an office, a space within her office. And he's there pretty much all week to take calls and questions and initiating special COVID plans if necessary. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The only thing I would like to say is something you said a little while earlier, that all the people that properties are being sold are properties that are commercial or abandoned. Hopefully, as we move forward, this stuff about homestead continue about not putting people out on these times. So even though somebody may be late or what, this is not the time to put anybody out. So hopefully, that philosophy continues. So that's the only thing I would like, for me, for my, that nobody be put out at this time because it's a difficult time. Now, I understand lots that are abandoned or properties, but homesteads where you have kids and families and things of that nature, is not where we want to be right now.
I completely agree with you. In fact, as I said, that our office in the last five years, even pre-COVID, that's not our philosophy. We work with a lot of taxpayers. We don't want to put anybody out. I could tell you that also as of January 2021, we have begun training a mineral warrant specialist. We'll have an individual who will be looking at mineral accounts, people that are receiving royalty checks. And these people predominantly reside outside Starr County, but are taking resources from Starr County and from the school district. So we're going to make a concerted effort to put warrants, target them, so that this money is coming to the district also.
I just didn't want to, I'm glad you mentioned Michael Cano and the RGC, the tax office. I was going to mention them so they weren't left out. I know they helped out a lot. And then you also went to the tax sale, the next tax sale, the date?
The next tax sale is on March 2nd. It's the first Tuesday in March at 10:30 a.m. at the south side doors of the courthouse.
I wanted you to reiterate that date because it's my birthday. It's pretty special. No, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Board.
Item three, report on petition protesting property value study findings.
Hello, Board President Ramirez, trustee. Hello.
Yes, sir. We can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, this is Robbie Harbuck with Linebarger as well. Good evening, Board President Ramirez, trustees, Acting Superintendent Peña. I'd like to thank you for allowing Linebarger also to provide property value study appeal services to the district. To give you a little history where we're at right now, we've been providing the services from '91 through 2019. We're currently in 2020's value study. For the '91 through '19 studies, we've been able to provide the district with somewhere around $653.4 million in value reduction, resulting in over $19.2 million in additional aid gain for the district. I sent a report back in September stating those facts. Recently, though, after that period of time, there had been some delays in things because of COVID this last year. And from September up through now, to the end of the year, for 2020, in completing the 2019 value study, we did file an appeal for the district for the 2019 value study in 2020. That ended up, I had reported it, ended up resulting in $953,000 in aid gain. It ended up resulting in $1,017,000 in aid gain for the district. We also, during the past couple of months, we had filed over a year ago, there were gas compressor lawsuits that covered all the way back to 2012, where the school district had to make refunds for gas compressors that were on the rolls that a judgment removed from the rolls. And we were able to file audits for those for the district. We filed a 2012, which resulted in a $1.7 million roll reduction with an additional $36,000 in aid gain. A 2013 audit, which resulted in a $9.8 million roll reduction, an additional $225,000 in aid gain. 2014 audit, which resulted in $810,000 roll reduction, another $15,000 in aid gain for the district. 2015 audit, which resulted in $4.9 million in roll reduction with an additional $114,000 in aid gain. And then for 2016, the roll reduction was $32.8 million, and that resulted in an additional $598,000. So just here recently, and I have checked the ledgers, the foundation ledgers, and then the years that EDA and IFA were also, they make a payment on the foundation ledger. On EDA and IFA, they make adjustments. The payments have been made in the past month, from the end of December to January. TEA has paid an additional $990,000 to the district for those audits that we filed. So that brings us up current now. And what I had reported in aid gain before, that would push us over $20 million for the district now in aid gain through the history of our relationship. We are, January 29th, the Comptroller's Office did release the 2020 property value study, which will fund the 2021 school year. Back in '19, the '86 legislative session changed funding for school districts from prior year funding current to current year funding current. So back in '18, well, back in '19, when '18 would have funded '19 and '20, when that flipped, '19 then funded '19 and '20. So what they ended up doing to get the year started now, they used the prior year value study, a growth rate, and they fund the school district up till the study released. So when the school started back in the fall of '20 for 2021, the '19 property value study value was used to fund the school up till now. January 29th now, the 20 value study was released, and that will begin funding the district. Now, it will replace the '19 estimate value with that growth rate. And you'll have a preliminary value now fund you. Until we finish, we are filing an appeal for the district. There is an invalid finding. We're in the middle right now of reviewing for a self-report appeal, which addresses any adjustments to the local roll. And we are fighting the state with a category appeal, trying to get them to reduce their values closer to the local values to get all the aid game we can back for the district. That process will typically last through May or June. We have 40 days from the 29th to file this appeal, which is March 10th. So we're on track to do that. Once that happens, then we will be back and forth with the state in hearings until about May or June. And then when there's a final value, we'll report that to the district. But TEA will not receive those values until August. And then once they receive those values in August, it will take them another two to four weeks to populate the summaries of finance. And then into September, into October, if they get back on track, they will start a settlement process. The settlement process was late this past cycle because of everything that has occurred this past year. So if they get back on track, settlement process for the 2021 school year should be into September, first part of October. If not, it could be pushed into November, December again, possibly. But that brings us up to speed right now to where we're at. We are working on a current 2020 PBS appeal for the district to try to recoup as much funding as we can for the 2021 school year. Again, once those values are certified in August to TEA, that will start a timeframe of up to three years that we can file three audits on 2020 PBS for the district. So in the fall, those rolls will be 17, 18 months old. And so we will start requesting adjusted rolls and reviewing to see if it would benefit the district to have an audit at that time. So each year, the first of the year, we're doing a self-report appeal review and a category appeal. And then in the fall, we're also following up with an audit. And then, of course, like on these gas compressors, anything that falls out of the standard three-year timeframe, when there is a judgment and the rolls have certified changes made to the assessor, that's beyond the three-year timeframe, we have up to one year to file an audit for the district to help recoup as much of that as possible. So, but that's where we're at right now for the district. Anyone have any questions concerning any of that?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
How do y'all get paid, out of curiosity?
Our fee is 10% of aid gain. It is a contingency fee. We do self-report our audit reviews. Now, we do have to file category appeals. And in the category appeals, historically, I mean, we have had to file them every year. The district has been invalid. We've had to file those. We send people in on the ground to review properties that the state has in their sample. We go out, take pictures, make notes, write appraisals, file objections, file evidence. So on those, typically, it is a 10% of aid gain. Now, when we do our self-report appeal review or an audit, and the district does not need those filed, we get to a certain point, we notice that they don't need to be filed. That work, it's a contingency also. We get to that point, there's no fee, if there's nothing filed, if there's no aid gain on that. But if we do file, aid gain on that is 10% as well.
So basically, if, for example, you do a lot of work and we do not get any aid gain, you don't charge the district anything?
That's correct.
Let me ask you, has your fee always been 10% over the last five, six years?
Yes, sir.
Hasn't changed in the last five, six years? It has not changed in the last five, six years?
No.
Last thing, our current funding is based on current, on the current taxation, you're saying? On our funding for this coming year, is it based on current values or the year before?
They're based on '20 now. It's '20 is funding, '20 and '21.
Okay. So '20 is funding '20 and '21. Twenty, '20 is funding this coming year, '20, '21?
Yes, sir. And that's part of the issue that schools are having now. Y'all do not get a final value until your school year is over with. So I don't know. It makes it difficult for the schools to generate estimates for just about anything. In the past, you had a prior year final value funding the current year, but you had a final value that was a steady value all year long. Now, if we filed an appeal, it would reduce your roll and it would get you additional aid gain. But you did have a number that you could generate numbers off of. The only thing that would be changing in those cases would be your ADA, your WADA, your EDA, your IFA, those type things, your collections, your rates, stuff like that. But now, your actual value that you're having to make these number generations off of, that can change. Well, it's going to change three times. You started out with a '19 with a growth rate applied to it. Up till now, now you have a '20 preliminary. And then when it's all said and done, you will have a final.
So basically, it's very difficult to basically say your definite funding. You're just going on estimates, correct?
Well, for right now, yeah. And I don't even have, we haven't even filed the appeal, so I don't have an estimate for 2020. It changes, I mean, it is not, that's another number that's not consistent. Each time we file something, it's from one year to the next, one cycle to the next. Those numbers are totally different, just like in those audits that I told you. You know, those range anywhere from $15,000 to $598,000 in aid gain. It just depends on how much value was involved within each year, and it changes with each year also.
Any other questions for Mr. Harbuck?
I have a question for Mr. Robles.
Mr. Robles.
Just one real quick question.
Yes, sir.
How do we take the estimates? Are we going to the previous year? How do, if we're going on current year evaluations?
We have a worksheet that was provided by TASBO when this happened. We started with the current year values last year. So we have a worksheet where we have historical values, and we actually get a percentage in the change of values. So we base it on that.
Because let's say, for example, we lost a lot of value. Let's say oil basically tanks, and we lost a lot of value in minerals. And how do we prevent, you understand, from overestimating our?
Yeah, no, it's very hard because if you want to be conservative in the values, you might be overestimating your revenues.
Exactly.
But then, if you overestimate your values, you might be.
What I worry about, what I worry about is, for example, let's say minerals tanked, oil, gas, and they just tanked. And our minerals went down by 40%, and we're kind of basing it on last year. Well, then we're going to take a big hit whenever the evaluations come out, correct?
Yes, sir. So it's based on an average percentage change, based on values.
So we really don't know our budget. We have estimations, correct?
Yes, sir. It's all about.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Harbuck. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, report on tentative budget calendar
The beginning of the budget process is upon us once again. And in an effort to properly plan and coordinate this endeavor, attaches a copy of the 21-22 budget calendar. Timeframes have been set to ensure that the budget process will be completed on a timely basis. Changes to the calendar will be made on an as-needed basis.
Any question for Mr. Robles? I do have, well, it's more of a statement from Mr. Peña. I know Mr. Jay Peña and Mr. Pope have brought up an issue, you know, because so many things are being done remotely now, that there's some concerns about the IT department as well as the Public Relations Department when it comes to budgetary constraints. So I thought about what the best thing to do is maybe form a committee. And I would invoke Mr. Peña's services as well, Mr. Pope's, and yourself, Mr. Peña, Superintendent, and whatever some administration to kind of look into to see if there is such fiscal constraints there and if it needs to be expanded or not. I think it's something we do need to look into. It's been raised a few times to certain individuals on the Board. If we don't address it now, I don't know when. It would be a good time to address it.
Yes, sir. We will.
Thank you so much.
This is the time to do it.
Any other questions for Mr. Robles?
Just one, Mr. Robles. The fiscal year shift was last year, verdad?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have we had like an impact report on that that might be able to assist us for the budget determination for this year? Or anything that might be able to, is that going to impact our decision-making in some way?
Well, actually, it should help us better because we are starting or implementing the budget before the school year. Before, the school would begin in August, and then our budget will not begin until September. So it does help with the funding for the campus.
Fantastic. Will you warn us of any pitfalls, just in case?
Yes, sir. We will. And this is all new to everyone. I mean, we've had issues with our accounting system, with the change and everything, but we're working through it. And yes, we will.
Yeah, because I see how unique this one is given that change.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for helping us out.
One last thing, our fiscal year starts when July 1st?
July 1st, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. All right. I think that's it for Section 6. I have a question. Section 7, recommending approving the consent agenda. The Board has agreed to discuss the following items. All the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. That'll be item number one, consider taking possible action on tax refunds for the month of January 2021. And item two, consider taking possible action on requisitions of $5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda on item one and two, but I have a question.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Do we have a second before discussion? Second by Mr. Pope. Go ahead, Mr. Vareal, and your discussion.
I just want to get back to one thing. And I know we owe the gentleman and stuff like that. But I know that in one of the things, we basically did the work and then basically came back to get approval from the Board, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The only thing?
Gonzalez Construction.
Yeah, I want to ensure that that doesn't happen again, if you understand what, let's get approval from the Board and then do it, not the other way around.
Yes, sir.
Is that the only one that's being presented today on that?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, the second by Mr. Pope. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item three, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve administrations' major increases to employees. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item three?
I have a motion, Mr. President. I move that we approve the pay, we approve the actual pay increases that have been recommended by administration and that we pay these on a monthly amount. And the pay increases are being made for public purpose of educating our students, for staying competitive with surrounding schools, and also for employee retention. And that these funds increase, these fund increases will come from a general operating fund and to be paid consistent with our payroll policies.
I have a motion by Mr. Peña. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
I didn't make it to the public hearing. I just have, how many employees and what's the grand total?
You have a copy right there, sir.
So this is, how many employees are they? Forty-four? And the grand total is $283,000?
Yes.
But we're also, that they didn't mention, But, but we're also, that they didn't mention, we're also giving a COVID one-time stipend of five hundred dollars to every professional, and two fifty for every paraprofessional. A one-time COVID to every single employee that works in our district, included in this.
That's included in?
Yes.
In this total amount?
No. It's, it's additional. I think Mr. Robles already gave us a number. I guess he can give it to us again.
Seven hundred and twenty thousand.
That's correct.
Then thirty-five thousand for another.
Seven hundred and?
Twenty thousand.
Yes, so the total will be seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty, not including fringe benefits.
Seven hundred and fifty-five thousand.
This is for the COVID incentive, or?
It's a COVID, it's a COVID incentive. Basically, I, I think we're trying to help people, since these are rough times. And to be honest with you, and they want to give it, correct me if I'm wrong, they want to give it to every single employee of our district, as far as paraprofessionals, uh, professionals, uh, permanent subs. Uh, every single employee works, because it's tough times.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree. And, uh, but, um, I mean, this is my, just my opinion. Instead of giving five hundred and two fifty, why not give the five hundred straight up? Straight to everyone. Uh, since, I mean, it's, uh, they're risking their lives. I mean, no one life is more precious than the, than the other.
That would require another fiscal assessment numbers and?
I, I think what we need to do, if you want to do that, correct me if I'm wrong, is, uh, we already had a public hearing, and maybe it's something we can consider in the next meeting, but right now we had a public hearing, so we'd have to open another public hearing to get for the other two fifty, but maybe it's something we can consider for the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Now, Mr. Peña, given, uh, what's been recommended on these raises with your administration, and with, uh, I would assume a lot of the, the things we're gonna be discussing in some of these meetings going forward with the change in str, in a, in our strategic plan and other things that we're gonna be introducing, uh, this is your firm recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. And you've, you've personally vetted all of the folks, uh, in, in this administration, and you're comfortable with all the folks in this administration, and everybody's good to go.
Yes, sir.
And to work harder, and to, to implement some of these changes that perhaps we're gonna be discussing, uh, throughout the next, uh, few sessions and whatnot. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right.
Right, so we have a motion by Mr. Jay Peña, and the second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign.
Mr. President, on this one, I have to abstain.
Okay, so it's five, one, five, in favor and one of attention. Motion passes. Item four, discussion, consideration, and possible action in giving the acting superintendent authority to contract for the lease, rental of voting machines and forms required for bond election.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item four as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Peña. Uh, any discussion on item four? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider taking possible action on request for permission to conduct a feasibility, feasibility study on employees' retirement insurance benefits. Is there a motion on item five? Any discussion?
I move that we approve item five as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion on item five? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider taking possible action on budget amendment number 2021-3. Is there any discussion on item six or a motion?
I move that we approve item six as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Peña. Go ahead. Any discussion, Mr. Vareal?
The budget amendment consists of, where are we moving monies from where to where, ma'am? Could I just ask?
No, the only one.
We have some budget amendments submitted by the campuses, and I have three that I am submitting based on the needs. The first one, totaling two hundred thousand dollars. That is to cover the canopies at Coria High School for the baseball and softball leashes, and some roofings for some buildings that will be repaired. The second budget amendment, uh, totaling one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. It's to adjust accounts for salaries, uh, just to make sure that we have enough money to cover those salaries in those accounts. And then finally, we have a budget amendment of one million thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. And that is to cover the first payment to, of the Dell laptops for the students that were leased purchased. And all of these budget amendments do not affect the fund balance, because the funds were already in the budget.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about those computers. Are we gonna get help from, from the federal government, state government, or anybody for those computers, do you know?
Yes, but actually, they are, since it was a lease, they will only help us with this first payment.
Okay. But the government is helping us with part of the lease?
Yes, with devices.
Part of the payment, all the payment, or some of the payment?
Right now, they're saying seventy-five percent.
Okay.
But they will let us know if the percentage, uh, will change based on the number of applications received by districts. So if less districts apply, well, then it will be more monies to distribute to the districts that did apply.
Is this a federal or the state?
Uh, this is the state.
Any other further questions for Mr. Robles?
Ma'am, on the, on the laptops, uh, is there like a residual value to them? I know that, how does that work? Do we depreciate them, or what do we do with them after?
Uh, actually, uh, for state purposes, uh, only fixed assets or a single item over five thousand will be depreciated in our books. Anything less than five thousand does not depreciate.
So we don't group them? So residual, like, are we, are they gonna keep them?
It is considered more like supplies.
Okay. All right. Understood. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Vareal, and it's-
So I have a question. Do we, what about the old computers that we have? What do we do with those?
Um, Mr. Science, I don't know if you can help me answer that question.
Uh, on the old computers, they can be used to sell them off to be in the middle auction. Uh, I know, uh, I think it's called this, there are about twenty-five pallets of old, uh, PRTs, the regular computer hundreds, uh, old towers, uh, all hard drives have been removed, none of these were controlled. And that stuff and, and, uh, that stuff, uh, had a hard drive, uh, they're all in the storage. And, uh, normally, we get fifty thousand dollars in the auction, but anything older than, I think it's about fifty years, we send it off, we tear it off, and we take it off of, uh, big assets and other projects.
The bottom line, correct me if I'm wrong, Eddie, the, the computers that are today, five years from now, are literally worthless, correct?
Unfortunately, with the now, the advancing technology.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Vareal, and a second by Mr. Peña. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item seven, discussion and possible action to accept the application of Diamondback Solar LLC.
Mr. President, I move that to accept the application of Diamondback Solar LLC for an appraisal value limitation on qualified property. Authorize the superintendent to review the application for completeness and submit to the controller, and authorize the superintendent to enter into any agreement to the extent, uh, to extend the deadline for the board action beyond a hundred and fifty days, subject to board ratification.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion on item seven? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eight, discussion and possible action to retain consultants to assist the district in processing of application for appraisal value limitation on qualified property from Diamondback Solar LLC.
Mr. President, I move that, uh, to retain O'Handlin, Demuth, and Castillo, and Mo, Casey, and associates to assist the district in processing the application for Diamondback Solar LLC.
A motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion on item eight?
I just have some discussion. Was this similar to what we had, I, I think we had retained them as council on the last solar energy project?
Yes, yes.
Is this a separate solar energy project?
Yes.
I think so, right?
Yeah, it is.
So we've got two solar.
Well, this, the other one was like, if they were planning it, now they want to do it.
No, it's not a good time.
But we have another project coming on board supposedly in the very near future.
Correct.
Okay.
But, uh, this, this doesn't come out of the school?
No.
No.
Oh. The, the, the company pays for all the legal services.
Oh, okay.
The, the, this Diamondback pays for all the other fees. We, the school encourages zero, zero fees of any kind.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on item eight? There's a motion by Mr. Vareal, and a second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item nine, discussion and possible action to accept the application of Rising Star Solar LLC for an appraisal value limitation on qualified property. Authorize the superintendent to review the application for completeness and submit to the controller, and authorize the superintendent to enter into any agreement to extend deadline for board action beyond a hundred and fifty days. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item nine?
I saw more like, uh, President just mentioned. I guess he's, he's-
Got it. There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Peña. Any discussion on item nine?
So this is another company?
Yeah.
Star Solar. You have to do the, uh, to do that part that's submitted to the controller.
Oh.
Any further discussion on item nine?
Yes, it's, it's another company.
Yes, it is.
I, I just have some, uh, just a question, just kind of general for everybody on the board. We're allowed to contract them, but, uh, uh, Moller, uh, I guess it's Casey.
They are attorneys, so you can contact them as much as you want.
Fantastic, fantastic. All right, we have a lot of questions.
Motion by Mr. Vareal, second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item ten, discussion and possible action to retain consultants to assist the district in processing of application for appraisal value limitation on qualified property from Rising Star Solar LLC.
I move that, uh, we retain O'Handlin, Detmer, uh, Castillo, Mo, Casey, and associates to assist in the district in processing the application from Rising Star Solar LLC.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Castillo. Any discussion on item ten?
And this is something else that we are, we will not incur fees.
Not, not a penny.
All right. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number eleven, consider taking possible action on renewal of Power School Enterprise Management Service, known as EMS. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item eleven, I believe?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eleven as presented in our board packet.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Any discussion on item eleven?
Item eleven and item twelve are both together.
Okay.
There are basically renewals for our power, uh, school enrollment. One is for enrollment, and one is the one that maintains the software. So it's the software we use to maintain our PIMS information and our student information system. So they're basically both renewals, and I'm presenting for Mr. Ray Alvarez, our PIMS director.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let me just read item, item twelve until the minute. It's consider taking possible action on renewal of Power School Enrollment Software Application and Maintenance Support Contract for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Do you want to amend your motion, Mr. Vareal, to include?
Yes, I, yes. Let me amend my motion to include item eleven and twelve as presented in our board packet.
Mr. Velazquez, will you second that? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Vareal, and a second by Mr. Velazquez on item eleven and twelve. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas and Rural Organist CDC ISD. I'm being told there's an addendum to this part, right?
Uh, yes, Mr. Board President. Uh, we do have an addendum. It is the same entity. It's just two different programs that they are requesting, uh, an MOU. They have been with the district for, since 2019. It is a prevention and an intervention, uh, program that, uh, Behavioral Health Solutions offers our students in the middle school. They are housed at Ringel Middle School, and they do service our students. So at this time, I do request, uh, approval of these, uh, MOUs.
But, but the motion would be the same. This is just addendum for information.
Correct. Yes, it's just two different programs, but the motion is the same.
Okay, got it. I, I move that we approve item thirteen with the addendum presented in our board packet, with the addendum also that was presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion on item thirteen? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, thank you, Ms. Covel. Item fourteen, consider taking possible action on memorandum of agreement between RGV Lead and Rural Organist CDC ISD for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion on item fourteen? Any discussion?
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion on item fourteen? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to upgrade Ring Central licenses for telephones. I know last time this one got some slack. So I'm gonna open up for discussion before I ask for a motion. Mr. Science, you want to?
Where are we at, Mr. Science?
Yes.
Uh, well, Mr. Salazar was gonna, uh, discuss it first.
Okay. Mr. Salazar, where's yours?
There was a lot of content that was added, huh? There was a lot of contractual, I guess, uh, uh, material that, that accompanied, I guess, the, the follow-up.
Well, what happened was, right, what hap, what happened is, I think the board asked me to review it, to review the contract, to see if there was any way that we could terminate it. And I did review it, and there is a thirty-day, all we have to do is give a thirty-day notice. So it's, it's not very difficult for the district to get out of it. So having said that, I did speak with Mr. Science to find out if there was, uh, what use we're having with it, and if, if we're actually using the product. And if we were to terminate it, what would be our plan B? Where would these phone lines go? So we have been going back and forth, but then Mr. Science, but so as far as being able to terminate it, we can, but the question is, what would we do then? So that, then that would be Mr. Science.
Okay, that, that's where I come in. Uh, we've been switching over from Spectrum to Ring Central. Now, unfortunately, the process already started, where the numbers, some of the numbers that we had with Spectrum have already ported over to Ring Central. Uh, we're at about, uh, twenty percent, twenty to twenty-five percent of the numbers are, have already been switched over to Ring Central. Now, if we were to terminate the contract, those numbers that have been ported over to Ring Central, and we were to go with another company, now Ring Central would have to port them over to the new company. Uh, I did talk, talk to a consultant on, on phone systems. It takes them about two weeks to do a transition, to come in here, install new phones, program them, get us local numbers, and then an additional thirty days to port the numbers from Ring Central to this company. Whoever, it can be AT&amp;T, it can be Verizon, it can be an independent contractor. So we're looking at about two months, two to months, two, two and a half months to have temporary numbers, which we have right now, uh, also. So it can be done. It's just, we're gonna be in limbo. Everybody's gonna have temporary numbers, the whole district. We could put out a directory. Uh, the price savings is probably gonna be the same, if not, maybe five hundred, uh, dollars less per month than what we have with the Ring Central right now. Uh, so is it worth it? Uh, it, it depends. It depends. Maybe in the long run, yes, 'cause a, again, Ring Central, in checking with a consultant, Ring Central is a residential to small business type of phone system. When I talked to the consultant from, uh, Ring Central, the, the person I was dealing with, I asked him, what ISDs do you have you worked with in Texas? Well, he told me, zero, none. They hadn't worked with a single K-12 institution in Texas, and they were working with one K-12 institution up north. That's it.
And that was Ring Central, Mr. Science?
That's Ring Central, yes, sir.
I know that you weren't consulted on this last contract.
No, I wasn't. No, I wasn't.
But the, the equipment itself, uh, do you think that the equipment that they provided is sufficient?
Uh, honestly, sir, yes, I do. There, there, uh, going back to that, since I wasn't consultant, the phone that was originally purchased was actually gonna uh, slow down our network. Uh, it was, in network terms, we have a gigabit network. We're gonna slow down our computers, because it's tied to the computer that's in the office to the phone. The phones were go, are gonna go down to a hundred megs. So in, in finding that out, I talked to, uh, Ms. Garcia, her former superintendent, and advised her that we were getting the wrong phones, so she was able to talk to the company and have the phones exchanged. I don't know, I think it was at, at level cost. There was no cost associated with it, but our phones are actually pretty decent. The only issue that we have, and that's why I had come before the board, is the limited extension licenses that we have was just not cutting it.
And it was way off.
Yes.
That's, that's the issue that I have. And what you just said right now, that they hadn't worked with any districts, that's what rang a bell with me, because how could you be so way off on the estimate of the numbers?
I know, I know.
But I guess this is a very general question. I mean, would you feel more comfortable, if, if you, if you could go back in time and you could consult, would you feel more comfortable with opening it up, maybe to bids and more companies to take a look at it?
Honestly, sir, I wouldn't have an issue. And, uh, unfortunately, the only setback is the numbers, the phone numbers that are associated with the campuses and the offices. 'Cause that would be like, there'd be like a two-month hiatus before they would get their numbers back.
Mr. Science, why do they say a month or two months to port numbers?
It, it, it has-
I, I know for a fact that other, I'm, I'm not gonna say, I know that other people have, have done things, and it takes a couple of weeks to port numbers. It shouldn't take, uh, six weeks to two months. Normally, it should be, porting numbers should be in there anywhere, at the most, three weeks.
Right, right. It's, we're talking three hundred and sixty numbers that they have to port over. Uh, it was, uh, eighteen entities, which was the campuses and the district's offices. And that's where the paperwork gets, uh, tends to get lost, uh, when you have so many, uh, numbers being ported over from so many different billing addresses. Uh, we had to file a CSR, which is a customer service report, in order for Ring Central to be able to port from Spectrum. Spectrum was actually giving Ring Central a hard time porting, uh, the numbers. So I had to intervene, get it from Spectrum, shoot it over to, uh, to Ring Central, and get the process going. So unfortunately, that, that is the steps that need to be taken. Maybe from Ring Central to another provider might be quicker. So it could be thirty days, it could be forty-five days.
The only thing I think, like Mr. Peña's saying, if we have a system that doesn't, never works with any schools, how can we think it's gonna be something that's gonna be good for our district?
I know, sir. I know, sir.
Don't you think we need a system that another work, works with schools?
Yes. Now, on, on, on another, uh, level here, we could go with another provider and just come, uh, do a complete directory of new phones and, and post, I mean, we have websites, we have flyers. Uh, the only thing that we would have to do is, for those of them that have business cards, they'd have to change the number. But I really don't see, as long as they're local numbers, I really don't see an issue with getting new numbers. Maybe it is time for new numbers. Uh, everybody's used to the old numbers. I understand that, but, uh, when you do a, uh, transition with close to seven hundred phones, it is gonna be time-consuming. It is gonna be time-consuming. Personally, I wouldn't mind going with another vendor, uh, that is reputable, that has worked with K-12 institutions. Uh, but it's, it's your choice.
Who do the phones belong to right now?
Uh, actually, the phones are being leased.
Uh, why, why can't we just, uh, go out to other competitors and just have them pitch us, uh, a, uh, price contract? We already have a contract, so why can't they just pitch it to us and see, uh, what they can do and see, uh, their background on?
My recommendation, sir, uh, in all honesty, my recommendation would be, let's stay with Ring Central for two months while we bid it out. While we bid it out.
Let me ask a question. Do you have anybody who, who's in, uh, in the state, uh, what do you call it? Buy boards. Do you have any, any companies that are on buy boards?
Yes, sir, I do.
Then why would we even have to bid it out?
Well, I mean, it, it is over fifty thousand.
No, but, but if you're on buy board, you can buy whatever you want. Fifty thousand, there's no limit on, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Robles, why are you, Mr. Robles? If you're buy board, you can buy whatever you want if you're on a buy board.
That's true.
So as, as long as they're DIR or buy board, we're okay?
Yes.
I, I can do that, sir.
Pitch it like Mr. Pope is saying, to two or three companies that are on buy board, and bring something better to us.
That, that's perfect.
If we were ever going to do it, this is the time. Yeah.
Okay, so can, can we do like a motion to stay with Ring Central for, for a month or two months, while we go out on, and get a proposal from a company to come in and, and do the project?
Do we table? Do we table? John has a question.
I think the reason that, that they wanted this was because the phones that they currently have are not usable. So they said, for us to be able to use them, correct me if I'm?
Right, right, correct.
Then we would need, we would need the extra features. But if the board's going to go out, you could go through the buy board, and within the buy board, you could ask for bids. You could three, four, five bids, and you could go to different buy boards, and you could still get the best value for the district.
Or quotes, basically.
Exactly.
Right, right.
Within the buy board, so you could do that. The question just becomes, do you want to leave the system the way it is right now? Or do you want to add some special features? If the board's going to move on, then there's no sense in paying for the?
How much are the special features?
It comes out to a total of nine hundred dollars per month. That's why we were to do this for, for a month or two, to add the feature, so that the phones that we currently have will have those features. We're talking two months, eighteen hundred dollars. In the meantime, by that, by those, by the end of those two months, we should have a vendor that can come in and replace, a K-12 vendor, that can come in and replace the phones.
Last thing, how true is it that in, in, in the phone IDs, we get all, you know, we're Brownsville, Falforria, Laredo?
That's going to be?
And I've been told that some of our people don't even want to pick them up, because they don't recognize, they, they're getting calls from all over the, 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 Texas, basically.
Right, well, let me, I'll be honest with you on that one, sir. When we first got the numbers, we had area codes in Pennsylvania, Washington, and I told Ring Central, when they get calls from these, people aren't going to answer, because they're going to think they're collection agencies.
Oh, Mr. Science, everybody started nodding over there in the back? I think the answer is yes to that.
Yes, so, so.
So why don't we, you say, but the nine hundred dollars are not binding, they'll only be binding for two months, or whatever, right?
Right, so after the first month, we could do, we could give the thirty-day notice, because they have to be given thirty days, so after the first month, we could give the thirty-day notice, and by that time, we can, we can have a vendor in place. But in the meantime, in the meantime, I would like to approve, the approval of the standard licenses instead of the limited extension, for a total of about, for a total of nine hundred and two dollars per month for two months, if possible.
Is that possible to modify something like that, Counselor?
Yes, yes, it's in there.
I wish we had a vendor from Ring Central that would actually acknowledge that, because I would hate to say, yeah, well, let's change up the terms, and then all of a sudden, they say, well, this is a whole new contract, and then now we're locked in again.
Well, no, I mean, I've read the contract, and there is a termination clause, we're given thirty days, and all it says is, we would be responsible for those thirty days, which any company would try.
Why don't we do this, why don't we make a motion that, that we're going to give them two months with the nine hundred dollars, with the understanding that, that the contract can be canceled. If for some reason it can't be canceled, then we don't do it.
It can be, it can be terminated. Oh, that, that's crystal clear.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and I invite the opportunity this time around for you to be involved in it. That'd feel a lot better, with you having more input, yeah.
The technology department will be involved in this one, sir, I can guarantee you that.
Thank you, Mr. Science.
I can guarantee you that.
With that said, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Mr. Eddie Science to, to buy the, the, whatever, the accessories you said for two months.
The licensing for two months.
And basically, of course?
And begin termination after the first thirty days.
And go look for, look for other?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my move.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second by Mr. Velazquez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Science.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on Texas A&amp;M International University camp partnership. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item sixteen?
I saw move, Mr. President, we approve item sixteen as presented in our board package.
Alright, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo, any discussion on item sixteen? All those, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase six activity buses. Is there a motion or any discussion on item seventeen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item seventeen as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
A second by Mr. Penya, any discussion or questions for Mr. Garcia on item seventeen?
Can you explain to us, Mr.?
Yes, sir, good evening, board members, Mr. President, Superintendent, Mr. Penya. Currently, we do use our yellow school buses to transport our athletes and band competitions, and extra, all the extracurricular activities. On longer trips, of course, rentals of charter buses occurs for our student. If we do purchase, if the board does approve the purchase of these activity buses, the rental of these charter buses will be eliminated. It will help us out in us keeping those yellow buses for actual route to transport our students to and from school. And I know that our players play with a lot of pride, and our band plays with a, I mean, compete with a lot of pride for our school district. I believe that if they arrive in a, at a competition or at a game with, or on these buses, I believe that they will have additional pride and play with additional pride for, for our school. These buses do have additional comfort, captain seats, technology such as USB ports on every seat, overhead compartments for their laptops, backpacks, underneath compartment for equipment, luggage. My recommendation is to go with the lowest quote, which is the international buses, Longhorn Bus Sales. There was a difference of about four thousand dollars from the other vendor. I do request for approval.
Mr. Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, if the bond issue passes, the funds will be provided by the bond issue, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
If not, we can enter into a lease agreement, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And this is a cost-saving, I mean, at the end of the day, it's cost-saving, because we spend a lot of money when we take the trips and?
Yes, sir, it, it will eliminate the rental of the charter buses, and it will be a cost savings for the school district.
And in terms of maintenance and warranty and all that stuff, it's covered too?
Yes, well, we do have a five, we, there's different warranty measures on, on the, on the bus. The engine biggest compartment is, component is five years, and there's additional warranty that comes on different aspects of the bus, but that is a very good warranty for, for those buses.
Because there was one company that didn't have like a repair shop or something nearby, is this the one that does have them nearby?
Correct, well, the, the lowest quote does have service or, or bus services for us in Laredo and in Far, and, and they do provide excellent service for us.
Wow, all I can say is that it's, it's about time, and this feels awesome to see something like this. I remember riding to the sports events in school, and you're raising your hand, the buses that didn't have the air conditioning.
We would, nowhere would it go.
But we see, we go out to the competitions now, and other teams show up in their buses, and they really show up, and just as fantastic as our athletic teams are doing, for, to be a part of this, to me, it warms my heart, the kids deserve this, man, they deserve this.
You can wrap these, right? So now we're going to wrap them with our?
Well, that, that, at the end of the day, would be to wrap them for the Gruyagators and the Rio Grande Rattlers, and basically, everybody knows who's arriving at the stadium, basically.
Can we put some boom boxes on top?
Why not?
Yeah, I'd gladly.
Alright, any other further discussion or questions for Mr. Garcia? Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Varela, the second by Mr. Penya. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on contracted services for grant writer and Fort Ringel curator.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we hire Colonel Ross Barrera, who basically is a grant writer and curator of our fort, and that we authorize our superintendent to basically negotiate and enter a contract with him. I think the fort, as everybody knows, is something that's sacred to a lot of people. I think the gentleman is well-educated, I think he can bring grants, I think he can, for the fort and for the school. But I think it's about time that we start looking at it, because it is, it's in severe need of, of repairs, and I think this gentleman is well-educated, he comes from the military, and I think he can get the job done.
Alright, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Penya, any further discussion on item eighteen?
I'll just make a comment, this, there's one thing that I know about this man is he moves. He moves, you know, and, and so, I think the pressure's on him, I think if, if anybody's been more vocal than anybody when it comes to the restoration of?
Now we put him to the test.
The ball's in his court.
Exactly.
We'll find, we'll find out what he does in one year.
Colonel, the ball, the ball's in your court, Colonel.
Alright.
And we will see the contract before?
Yes.
Well, the contract, once you negotiate the contract, you'll bring it to the board, right?
Yes.
Mr. Salazar?
I was, I was going to say that it might be a good idea to say, subject to board ratification, it's approved, but then, subject to board ratification, I can sit down, once the contract is, is written, and we can make sure that the district's interests are protected. And then we can bring it back to the board at the next meeting and get it ratified.
And we ratified the contract, but we can hire him now, subject to that, to that.
Okay. Mr. Varela, do you want to amend your motion?
Well, yeah, whatever Mr. Valtazar said, amend it that way, and we hire him and ratify it in the next board meeting.
Subject to, okay. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, the second by Mr. Penya, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Alright, the board will now convene in executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, this is Department Code Section five-five-one zero-seven-one through five-five-one point zero-seven-six and five-five-one point zero-eight-two to point zero-eight-four, the time is seven fifty-one PM. Alright, we are reconvening in open session, the time is eight forty-one PM. There is no action required on item A, do I have a motion on item B?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item B as discussed in, in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do I have a motion on item C?
Mr. President, I move that we pass item C as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Do I have a motion on item D?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item D as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Penya, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
Abstain.
Okay, there's five in favor with one abstention, motion passes. Do I have a motion on item E?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item E as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Penya, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
Abstain.
There's five in favor with one abstention, motion passes. Do I have a motion on item F?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item F as presented out to us in executive session.
There's a motion by?
Executive session.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second by Mr. Pope, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjourn.
Mr. Pope, is there a second?
Second.